System, so we hope you'll bear with us if we make any mistakes here, which we probably will. I do want to thank Amy Cayer for doing an incredible amount of work to get this system up and ready to go. So I don't know if we have any requests to speak?
No, there are none.
We're not?
No.
No, okay, so with no requests, we will recess to closed session and we will be back at six o'clock. Thank you. Well, welcome to everyone. We are having fun here at the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Castro Valley Unified. And as you can see, we're in our boardroom for the first time in a year. Well, we had one meeting where we were in here, but... And we are working on our electronics, which are brand new, and I hope you will bear with us while we learn how to use it. So it is terrific, and we want to thank Amy Cayer for her hard work on it. It's going to be terrific. So we will return from, we reconvene to open session, and our first order of business is our pledge of allegiance. And we'll call on our student board member Shane, who I think is there somewhere, I hope. As I say, we're learning our systems here.
Yes, I'm here, and it's great to see all of you in the boardroom.
Hey Shane.
All right.
So you only listen to Shane, please?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Shane. The board took one action in closed session. We voted five to zero to appoint Dr. Raul Zamora as the Assistant Superintendent of HR as of July 1st, 2021. Dr. Zamora will replace Dr. Sherry Beetz, who has served amazingly well at Castro Valley and is retiring after 16 years. And we're sorry to see her go. Dr. Zamora's contract will be approved under item 10E and amended. That item will be amended to add his name to the personnel report. Other than that, the board took no other action in closed session. Okay, we do have an amended agenda. Are there any additions other than the personal report?
No.
The contract, yes.
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Dolly. It's removed and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote here. I'll start with our student board member, your preferential vote.
Yes.
Thank you Shane. Trustee Whitaker?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Yes.
Trustee Cusiak?
Yes.
Vice President Theodore?
Yes.
And I will say yes to make the approval of the agenda be five to zero. Move on to the mission statement by trustee Cusiak.
Thank you. In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided by excellent inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, Michael. We are still taking public comment. We do have a slight change in how we do it with our new equipment. So I'll go through that for everybody right quick. The board respects and encourages the public to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must submit a request to address the board Google form during the start of the agenda item. And it is at www.cv.k12.ca.us-publiccomment. And it's, I'm sure, on our website. I'm sure. Thank you, Amy. At the discretion of the board president, speaker cards may be accepted after the start of the agenda item. Your name will be called, and you will be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be re-muted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes unless the board decides otherwise. There are up to 30 minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. And just to remember to comply with the Brown Act, the board may listen to comments from speakers under public comment, but can neither discuss nor take any action on the issues presented if it's not an agendized item. So thank you. We're moving on now to our student board members' report. Shane, what do you have for us tonight?
All right, it's a little shorter than last week, but we've got a few good things going on. CVHS Broadcasting Club has begun live streaming our various games at school. CVHS held a field day event for seniors this past Saturday just to celebrate the end of the year. CVHS Homecoming is happening all days this week with our modified skit and dance. Canyon Student Activities held a mod pizza fundraiser last week, as well as a fundraiser at the Lake Chabot Market. On May 19th, CVHS is hosting its Senior Awards Night to celebrate our graduates and announce scholarship winners. And then I think she's somewhere on this call, but I'd like to introduce Jenny Me, who is our ASB student school board rep for next year.
Thank you Shane, and congratulations to her. We look forward to meeting her.
Hi, I'm actually here.
You are. Welcome to our meeting.
I'm a sophomore this year, and I'm going to be a junior, and I'm so excited to work with all of you.
We look forward to seeing you. Congratulations again, and thanks Shane. We have a special guest tonight from Proctor School, so we're happy to get the report from Proctor School.
That's right, you're welcome. Proctor principal, Ms. Garabin, who will join us with her team to present.
I have to unmute myself. Sorry about that. All right, there I am. Sorry about that. Thank you Superintendent Mahdi and President Howard and the Board of Education for the opportunity to highlight Proctor's efforts with cultivating togetherness, community, connection over this past year. Next slide. Tonight, we will share three areas of focus that we have been working on to increase parent and family engagement while responding to the ongoing needs in our school community. This year amongst all the other years, we have had more reasons than ever to build and maintain relationships in our school community and connections with one another. We have been busy addressing community climate, providing trainings for families while in distance learning, while also providing families with tangible supports during a season of uncertainty. There's a quote by Coretta Scott King that says, "The greatness of a community is most accurately measured by the compassionate actions of its members." And I can't think of a better way to describe the Proctor community and its families. Which leads me to introduce to you Ebony O'Melaga, who is one of our amazing Proctor parents, who also serves on the Proctor PTA and is the Director of Fundraising. Ebony?
Hi Heather, can you hear me okay?
I can, thank you.
Great. So I'm happy to say that we are so fortunate to have such a diverse PTA board and membership association who is truly reflective of the broader Proctor community. Equality is not only just built into our PTA mission, but for so many of us, it's a personal mission. There is a power in knowing that people from a medley of backgrounds can and will stand in unity to fight injustices towards vulnerable communities. The Proctor United Against Hate shirts is our way of materializing that mission and passion.
Next slide.
We'll be using the funds raised from these shirts, thank you, for training and educational material for the school. And our first endeavor is the Juneteenth celebration. Next slide, please. If there is one, yeah, thank you. Our goal is to celebrate and educate Castro Valley community on the origins of the holiday and Black culture. Prior to Juneteenth, we'll offer a virtual gallery where Proctor students and family members can submit art or video of what Juneteenth means to them. And then on the actual holiday, we'll host a lively drive-through distribution of candles and resources related to the holiday. In the evening, we hope that everyone will light their candles, and it'll be in a viewable location from the street, also signifying the unity. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Ebony. And as you can see, community engagement has been a big focus for us this past year. More than ever before, families have been in need of additional supports and training to help them through our time in distance learning. Through this need, has developed the Proctor Parent Academy. Next slide. Each month, we've worked to provide our families with training and strategies focused on academic and social emotional learning. This year, we have held trainings on Eureka Math, student behavior supports, technology supports for families, social emotional supports for families, and writer's workshop strategies. As we continue this program in the fall, Proctor will offer additional trainings for families that will be Mosaic-inspired with a focus on equity. Dan Riley, a Proctor parent of three, who serves on our Proctor School Site Council and on the district's Equity Task Force, is here tonight to share about our plans with bringing this training to the Proctor families. Next slide.
Hi, good evening to the board. Thanks for the opportunity to share. So the Proctor community is really excited to make some specific commitments to the district principal of All Means All, not just in the classroom, but also really everywhere on campus, visually what we see in interactions between families, at events and meetings, and really everywhere where the Proctor community is and where it's interacting with one another, where we're interacting with one another. So to date, the teachers at Proctor have participated in Mosaic project trainings as part of their PD this year. Some select parents are currently participating in the opportunity provided by the adult school. And also Proctor reps are participating in the district's Equity Task Force. And we know that, like in many communities, there's professional and lived experiences of the Proctor community stakeholders that are going to inform our process. So we're currently forming a small group of ambassadors that will bring the collective work to the Proctor community in a very personalized way. So we're kind of thinking about it like Mosaic-inspired, task force-informed, but Proctor-specific. Something that's really tailored to our community. And we think that the impacts are going to be really a deeper engagement and investment by all members of the Proctor community into the Proctor community, stronger connections between parents and teachers, and creating kind of a shared equity framework. And really a vibrant community that's actively engaged in building an equity-based school site where all really does mean all, specifically in terms of race equity, but obviously not just that. And I think that shared investment and that actively building components are the pieces we're really excited about. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dan, so much. And we look forward to sharing that with you all about this training this next school year. So now I'd like to introduce to you our PTA Board President, Gillian Cardona. Gillian?
Thank you, and thank you Board Trustees for this opportunity. Proctor's PTA mission has always been to promote the welfare of children and youth at home, school, and throughout the community. While in lockdown, COVID highlighted the food insecurities within our community, either due to layoffs or parents having to take a step back from work in order to be home with their children. We knew that as a school community, we could step in and help to become action-oriented. A couple of members of the board became aware of a bottleneck of food at both Hope for the Heart in Hayward and Dig Deep Farms, a program funded by the Alameda County Deputy Sheriff's Activity League. The challenge is getting the food from the distribution sites to our community, into the hands or cars of our families. Our new board quickly implemented a drive-through contactless food distribution site at Proctor Elementary School. Now I'd like to introduce to you my friend Brad Piles, our new Proctor PTA Community Enrichment Coordinator, who has helped to spearhead this amazing program since the creation last summer. Brad?
Thanks, Gillian.
Next slide.
So before I describe the program in some detail, I just want to be clear that any success this program has had is really entirely due to our amazing volunteers. They come out every week and do any task that's needed, whether, you know, they're coming out in the heat, the cold, the rain, weekends, weekdays, holidays, when there's virtual learning, hybrid learning, whatever's going on elsewhere. They come out and they really are the ones that make this work. So the program is contactless food distribution. That means people drive up, open up their trunks. Our volunteers wait until the car is stopped and verified it's in park along with the car behind it. Then they leave the sidewalk, fill up the car's trunk with food, and the car goes on. So the driver does not get out of the car at any time. In terms of our goals for starting this program, we really were trying to avoid food waste at the time because there were a lot of problems with the supply chains breaking down and the food banks being overwhelmed, along with just helping the community. But it's turned out that really being able to meet all the parents at the school and do something positive with our children has been the other huge benefit. And so we have everyone from TK kids up through high school kids that help us, and it's been a real positive, I think, for all the families involved. Here in the pictures, you can see some of the examples we've hand out. In the upper right is an example that would go to about 200 families. So it's actually quite a bit of food that goes to each family. And the bottom right is a picture of what's in some of those boxes, with the mixed produce, dairy, and meat. And they'll get that with some non-perishables. So we go to the next slide. You can see the growth of the program, starting from about 50 families a week back in June to over 200 families a week today. In total, it's been over 6,735 families we've been able to serve, which we're really proud of and is pretty amazing. The gaps in the chart are where we had to cancel distributions because we didn't have access to food. If you go to the next chart, you can also see the growth in our volunteer count. And that's also been grown over time. The big jump in February is we had got a new agreement with Hope for the Heart to supply more food, and our families really came out to make that work. So over 850 hours in total, 870, that they've supplied and really been the ones that make this program thrive. If you go to the next chart or slide, you can also see that as of the end of May, our agreement with Hope for the Heart is ending, and we're starting with Alameda County Food Bank. That will allow us over the next year to ensure we have food, don't have to cancel events. And they also offer some additional services like nutritional seminars and cooking classes for the community, along with the opportunity for grants for equipment if we were to need it. So that's our program. We're really proud of it, and thank you for the opportunity to tell you about it.
Thank you, Brad, for sharing about this incredible effort of our Proctor PTA and community and volunteers. Now, next slide. If you can please enjoy a short video that captures the work that we've been sharing about.
Hi, I'm Cooper Matthews. I'm a freshman in high school. I participate in the food distribution every Tuesday because I like helping people, and it makes me happy to see that they're getting food.
Hi, I'm Haley Matthews. I'm a senior at Castro Valley High, and I participate in the food distribution every week because it's nice to meet new people, and it feels good giving back to my community.
I'm Ally Leonardo at Proctor Elementary, and I really enjoyed doing the food distribution because it gave me a chance to participate in our PTA and meet more of our parent volunteers and parents here at Proctor, and it gave me a chance to give back to our community.
Hi, my name is Sam DiAntonio, and I'm a junior at San Leandro High School.
Hi, my name's Emmy DiAntonio, and I'm a junior at Castro Valley High School.
So every week, the Proctor PTA helps distribute food at the elementary school. We serve about 100 to 200 families a week.
It's really nice to just see how many families that we're helping, and it's great to be a part of such a great project.
Yeah, I enjoy just working with everyone there. A lot of great people.
Okay, so this concludes our presentation tonight. And now I'm going to introduce to you Christina Arden, who is one of Proctor's fifth grade teachers, who will be acknowledging our Outstanding Student of the Year, Sif Sandu. And I think Sif is on the call today. Hey Christina?
Hi, I'm here. Hello. Well, on behalf of the Proctor staff and teachers, I am delighted to introduce Castro Valley to an incredible young woman named Sif Sandu, who we are recognizing as our Outstanding Student of the Year. Sif Sandu is a fifth grade student who has attended Proctor Elementary School since kindergarten. Her teachers describe her as an amazing student who is a hard worker and a shining example for her peers. She's one of those people that you feel like you've known for your whole life. She's warm, she's engaging, and she's sincere. She's the kind of person who asks how you're doing, and she actually genuinely cares about your response. She's a critical thinker who pushes herself academically, especially during challenging activities. She has persevered throughout this year of distance learning, even when it wasn't easy. Sif is thoughtful and considerate of others, showing kindness to all. She's a great friend and role model for all students at Proctor. Sif is an awesome friend, student, and young person, and her smile and positive attitude can light up a room. Sif is not only kind, but she's compassionate toward others. She has always worked at developing friendships with our special day students, ensuring that they felt included at lunch and recess activities. This year, Sif is on our Proctor Patriots Leadership Team, and she's done a wonderful job in this role. She's always ready to lend a helping hand, and she takes initiative when she sees that certain things need to get accomplished. Sif has taken on this role with pride and seriousness, and it has been a joy watching her grow as a student leader, even during the short time of in-person learning. Sif is very helpful to teachers and staff, often volunteering her time to help out. One of her favorite places to spend time is the school library, as well as her own classroom, discussing life and books. She was able to be Proctor's librarian for a day, and is an avid reader. Her love of reading and enthusiasm about the Harry Potter books actually encouraged her own teacher to read it after putting it off for so many years. Sif should be very proud of all that she has accomplished while she's been at Proctor, as she truly understands and embodies what Proctor pride is all about. She is an amazing, well-rounded, kind girl who is going to set the world on fire. We can't wait to see her future accomplishments. Congratulations, Sif. We are so proud of you.
Thank you, Christina, and congratulations, Sif. So well deserved. And now I'd like to introduce Proctor's Outstanding Parent of the Year, Dana Montalvo. Dana's continuous support of Proctor Elementary School is evident in all that she does. Dana has volunteered countless hours in the classroom, driven on field trips, and has stepped up multiple times as the parent room rep for her son's classroom, always willing to help plan parties and rally the parents in her son's grade level. She's brought enthusiasm and high levels of engagement and participation to our Safe Routes to School walk and roll events. She believes in providing students with true life experiences that will positively influence each student and staff member. Dana Montalvo embodies the Proctor pride trait for D, doing kind things. Dana always has a positive attitude and shows much consideration towards others. She's extremely thoughtful, and if something is needed, she simply just needs to ask. Dana is a Proctor parent who will go out of her way to check in on you if you're sick or not feeling well, and has been a constant source of support and encouragement, especially as we were in distance learning this last year. She went above and beyond to support PTA events and classroom activities and celebrations. Dana's kind and positive spirit is greatly appreciated, and we will value our last year with her at Proctor Elementary. We are proud to honor Dana Montalvo as our Outstanding Parent Volunteer of the Year. Thank you, Dana. And that concludes our presentation for Proctor Elementary.
Thank you very much, Heather. That was a terrific presentation. So we can take some board comments now, I think, on the Proctor presentation. You know, I see your hand, Lavender, but I was going to start with Shane, if he has anything that he would like to say.
Well, just thank you so much for giving that great presentation. Your focus on connection is extremely important, especially this year with all the disconnect that we're facing. But creating those pathways for parents to get education on how to support their students is vital. And also those donation sites and how many volunteers you got really show how much work that you've all put into this program. And also congratulations to Sif. It's very clear from how your teachers describe you that you are really a light of Proctor, and also congratulations to Dana.
Thank you.
Thanks Shane. Lavender?
I want to thank you all for coming today. Thank you, Principal Garabin, Christina, Gillian, Dan, and Ebony. What you said about togetherness, community, and connection, you know, we've been through a lot, and we keep talking about what everybody's gone through collectively and what we're all facing individually. And I keep saying this, but the way that you've come together and supported the community in the time of need, it just continues to make me think that Castro Valley is a place I actually want to live. Seeing people come together, being kind to one another, helping each other out. Just thank you for everything that you're doing to create that connectedness and that community, and to create healthy and safe environments for our kids. I mean, food insecurity is a real problem, and to be able to meet that need so kids can function in school is... I mean, you're giving part of yourself, and I just wanted to thank you so much for all the work that you're doing and all the work that you're doing around equity to ensure that all really does mean all. And I do want to thank Sif. Congratulate her. We need more kindness in the world, just like you provide. And thank you, Dana, for everything that you do. We can't do it without parents just like you. And whatever school you're going to, they are going to love you there. So thank you so much.
Sure. So Proctor School, I was very lucky to have a couple of years where my daughter went to Proctor for fourth and fifth grade. And what a wonderful school it was. She had Bonnie Worthington and Alec McBrury. And Bonnie was so wonderful with language arts, and Alex was so good with math and his football scores. Just a little shout out to those two people who are now elsewhere, but I wanted to say that. And then to what you're doing now, using Mosaic Project and equity-based and seeing a need for groceries in the neighborhood. How terrific, this PTA enrichment person, Brad, I guess Pike's, I couldn't quite see the name, and feeding 200 families a week. What a wonderful job you're doing, Mary Proctor, contributing to the community. And then Seth Sandu, student who cares for others and is an avid reader, academic. What a winning combination she is going to go for. And thanks so much also to Dana, the parent.
Thank you for a great presentation. I've seen the lines of...
I've seen the lines of cars waiting at the pharmacy on Fairmont Drive and thinking how overwhelming it must be for parents to sit in that line waiting for food. And to have your school create this initiative and ease that burden for some of those parents so they're not sitting in that line and there's more opportunities to access food. We always talk about meeting people where they are and that's what you do. You created an opportunity to meet people where they are and meet their needs for food. So thank you very much and for showing us such a great presentation of the effort that you're making. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi everyone. First, I want to congratulate Sif and Dana for being important parts of the Proctor community. Thank you for what you've done and you've got, as a volunteer at the next school or at your next school, Sif, I'm looking forward to learning more about what you're going to contribute to our community. I am so impressed. Heather, we met a few weeks ago and I just got a preview of all the amazing things happening at Proctor. And it's really moving to see how this community has risen to action this past year. She gave me a preview of how you all had coordinated the food box distribution. And Brad, wow. And to everyone in the entire team there, I want to thank you for doing that. Reflecting on what I've seen from a lot of our schools this past year and what a lot of families have gone through, I think of my own experiences growing up and imagine what it would have been like for a kid like me in central Florida and the struggles we went through if we had such a caring community like this. So thank you for what that instills. I am so grateful your community has decided to commemorate Juneteenth. I am so grateful for that. And I hope that will build more awareness as to what that means. The erasure of communities and acknowledging of people's real power. And just thank you for doing that. And thank you for this T-shirt and I will wear it proudly at a future board meeting. And I just thank you all so much for your community. I am grateful that Heather, you're leading it and everyone, what y'all are doing at Proctor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I think you're on mute. Pervin?
I'm trying to see where I can, we're getting used to this. So it's just so wonderful to hear about all of the things you're doing. You know, a lot of times we do this work around equity within our system, with our staff, ourselves in here. But I think it really isn't complete until something like you just shared happens, because it should be everybody. And that's the connection that we need all over in every school and in our communities. Because, you know, unless we're all talking about the same thing, having the same language, we don't move as far as we should. So I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for making that connection and moving in that direction. And I know I have worked with, Mr. Riley has been a wonderful part of our Equity Task Force as well. I know I've met Jillian and I think the rest of you, I know Ebony and Brad. So I just hope to meet you in person once we are in person. And of course, it's so awesome to see Christina here, one of our teachers as well. Congratulations, Sif. Exactly what we need, warm, energizing, I wrote. That's what we, you know, all of the characteristics that we have are going to take you far. And then of course, Mrs. Montalvo, as Trustee Whitaker said, they're going to love you wherever you end up at Canyon or Creekside. And I keep thinking that we should just make a list of all of you guys going to middle school with posters and names and information so that they have quick access to you guys. So thank you so much. Thank you Heather for your leadership and this is great work and thank you for the T-shirt.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you board.
Yeah, so thanks again for a great presentation. You know, it is, I think this is probably the most effective PTA project maybe I've ever seen. I've been around the district for 20 years now. So that's a very amazing project that you have going there. And I have seen those cars in the street for a number of weeks. And so clearly you're fulfilling a need that's out there in the community. And I think do that with your students and let them be part of it is a terrific lesson to teach them. So thanks to all, for all that work that you do there. And congratulations to Sif and to Dana as well for their work tonight. So once again, thanks to Proctor for a great presentation. We really enjoyed it. Good luck with that project for the next year.
Thank you. We look forward to giving you an update.
Awesome. Thank you.
We'll move on now. We have another special feature here tonight. We're going to be able to recognize our nominees for the Teacher of the Year and look to the superintendent to, or to Dr. Beetz.
Dr. Beetz is going to do this item for us. It's just, it's always so amazing to look at the list of names that we see. And I always think like, we really need like 10 times as many that we can recognize. We have outstanding teachers in Castro Valley and tonight we're just featuring some of them. So Dr. Beetz?
Thank you. So since we can't have all of the teachers here in person like we do most years and like we prefer to do, we will be doing this as a virtual slideshow so that you can see the teachers and that we can introduce them to you virtually. So go ahead and get started. So each school selected a teacher. And so what you're going to, what we're going to read tonight are the teachers from each of the schools. So the first one is Vicki Limneos, who's a kindergarten teacher at CVE. Alexis Maya, second, third grade combination teacher at Chabot Elementary. Catherine Carson, resource specialist at Independent Elementary School. Shauna Seidel, third grade, I should say Shauna Seidel and friend, third grade at Jensen Ranch. Cheryl Herring, fifth grade at Marshall. Charles Reyna, science specialist. Shannon Barata Smith, fifth grade at Stanton. Amanda Santos, fifth grade at Vanoy. Chrissy Emmons, social studies and avid teacher at Canyon Middle School. Michelle Dubay, seventh grade, social science teacher and RTI specialist. Tosa, teacher on special assignment for Creekside. Jeffrey Small, math teacher at Castro Valley High. Maureen Kennedy, she is the adult transition teacher up at Roy Johnson. And Elise Desalaya, she's the CTE medical teacher at Castro Valley Adult and Career Education. And our nominee for County Teacher of the Year. So what we do is of all of the site nominees, then one nominee goes forward to Alameda County. And the winner is Elisa Desalaya. So Elise will, her name, she will represent Castro Valley at the Alameda County Award Ceremony and Process. And I think that is scheduled for next fall. So we will know how things go next fall. That concludes our nominees.
Well, congratulations to all the nominees and to the nominee to the county contest. It's terrific. So thank you, Dr. Beetz. So move on to item 6A. We have our two reports from our two unions. Do we have a rep from CSEA tonight? We do not. How about with Castro Valley Teachers Association? Welcome Mark, I'm assuming.
Hi board. I'm actually at Castro Valley High School right now. I'm watching a baseball game and right behind me, the air conditioner is on. It's doing, it's circulating, I think, five air circulations per hour, which is something I learned this year because of COVID. I'm a lifelong learner, just like hopefully everybody at this meeting. Happy day to the teacher. That was a great presentation by Proctor and it further shows just how amazing and awesome our school sites are, our community is, our students. It's just, it's such a pleasure seeing these presentations. This meeting is also always my favorite one of the year because it's celebratory. And as we all know, we need more joy and celebration, especially this year. I'd like to congratulate all the recipients of the awards tonight. As you know, we have some of the most dedicated and innovative and caring teachers in the state and everyone nominated tonight is exceptional. Congratulations specifically to Ms. Desalaya for being nominated as Teacher of the Year. That's awesome. I could spend the whole board meeting sharing stories of how our membership has risen to the day and every challenge this year and how they weathered the pendulum of public opinion and how they time and time again showed up and served our community. It's super, I just, it's such an honor and I'm proud to represent CDT because of the great colleagues that I work with, whether it's day to teacher or not. This year has been beyond challenging and as we round third and head for home, I would like to thank the governance team for their dedication and ability to make some very tough decisions. We were able to get through the many changes in legislation and the rapidly shifting goalposts because we worked together. So have a good evening, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you Mark. Enjoy the game. All right, do we have any requests for public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Let's not be shy.
I'll move to approve this consent agenda.
Thank you.
Paul's second.
Thank you Mike. Okay, so we've moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion or any questions? Hearing none. We'll move to a vote here. Shane, your vote please.
Yes.
Yes, thank you Shane. Lavender?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Bud?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I'll say yes, so the consent agenda is approved five to zero. So the board is now going to take a 10-minute recess. We have been at this for just under three hours now. So we will be back at, let us say, what, 6:56? Lavender's correcting there. Thank you Lavender. Appreciate that. So we'll adjourn for 10 minutes now. Thank you. So we'll adjourn for ten minutes now. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Whoops. Not quite accustomed to the sound of my voice. So we'll move on now to the reports discussion on action items. First item is where we're going.
There we go. All right. Actually, I need to see it closer. Okay, okay. All right. Next slide. I don't have a whole lot to share tonight because there isn't a whole, there's a lot happening. But there's a lot we are still waiting for. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about current health conditions, CBUSD updates, and then CBSD planning for the fall. They put my glasses on because I see better. Being back in the room. All right. Next slide. Thank you. So as you see, we're going in the right direction. This is really great. I know some counties have already gone into yellow. But we are still in orange and we'll find out in the next couple of weeks. You have also heard that the governor is looking at the blueprint and at some point in the future, in the next few weeks, that will go away. So that kind of changes this tier system that we're talking about. Okay, next. So it's really exciting that we are actually able to offer that the health department, that CDC has actually put some information out as well, encouraging all of our children who are twelve and up to get vaccinated. We are working to see if there's a possibility to have something near here. And I want to thank trustee Theodore, who's working with us in addition to a couple of other people. I just think the easier we can make it for families, the better. Because they can just come as a family. So twelve years and up, it's great news. We didn't think we would be here so quickly, but we are. So we'll send some more information up as soon as we get something from the health department as well. Next. So current updates, in-person instruction continues. It's wonderful to see students as I visit schools. Graduations, promotions, all sorts of things are happening. And we're excited to be able to actually have our high school graduation in person. And you will obviously get information on that from the school as well as Redwood High School. And then there are promotions and a whole bunch of end-of-the-year activities happening. Planning for the next school year is on an ongoing event here. There's a lot behind the scene that we're working on. In fact, we have this document that we kind of put together with our administrators to kind of look at all the pieces that need to be in place. So May revise should be out maybe by tonight. And that also along with legislation that we are expecting soon. The reason we're really interested in the legislation is because there are some conversations about, obviously, it's in-person, full-in-person, everyone in. But just kind of having conversations around, maybe, you know, a few students who might not be able to actually be in and how do we support them? So that conversation is happening at state level. Next slide. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, like I said, full-in-person instruction is what we are planning for, following all the guidelines that we have. There will be many, there will be less, obviously, restrictions in so many ways. And we'll follow all the safety protocols. Preparations have begun and we're actually excited to see our kids back in person, as we've seen them partially this year. August ninth is the teacher work day and August tenth is the first day of school. And as I say, teacher work day, I want to say happy day of the teacher. It's California Day of the Teacher is today, but the National Teacher of the Year was last week, which is when we sent information out. And today, we all went around to schools and dropped off just a tiny token of our appreciation for teachers. And then next week is the classified week for our classified members. And we'll do the same thing. May revise in legislation, as I said, coming up. We will hear things in May, but the actual budget and all of that actually gets approved in June. CBUSD already has. So when I was talking about the fact that there is a lot of conversation around online for families or students who cannot come in or choose to do that. A lot of districts are actually having to put programs together. We are very fortunate. We already have a virtual academy. So that kind of, not kind of, it really helps us tremendously. Some of the, even for people who don't have Virtual Academy, the conversation is going to have to be had about how to take attendance, what does it look like, is it independent study or not? For us, we already have a program. And we are hoping to have some information nights on the Virtual Academy coming up because that is just an option, a school that we have. So, but it, I think it's really important for us to share that it is not the same thing as we had this year. This year, we did things on apply, we kind of went back and forth. We were actually allowed to do those kinds of things that we have held harmless in some ways. Next year, those things are not there. And we're going to have to actually find out from our families who really need that option way ahead of time because we do have to do staffing and then stay in that mode for the entire year for whoever chooses that. But there will be a lot more information at the parent night. And then after that is when we would send something home to families to just kind of get the the number of students and the interest because based on that is how we do our staffing. And just, I can tell you that Dr. Beats worked day and night this year as we moved back and forth, back and forth. And it is impossible, it's costly, it is really difficult to find staff in mid-year. So. Next slide. Or is that my last one? I think that's my last one. So any questions you have, I'd be more than happy to do my best to respond, but we're excited. More information.
It's just really a relief to be in the position that we are now. We have so much know-how from what's happened this past year. And I'm just impressed by what this district has been able to do with the resources we've had. So I think there is a reason to be optimism as we go into the fall. And I think we're clearly in the right direction from a public health point of view. But I think this district has learned how we can do things. And we're going to be so much more positioned to open, I think, in a way that it's going to feel more like normal. So I just want to thank everyone for getting us through this year.
Yeah, thank you. Everyone has worked really hard. Honestly, when we, we've learned a lot. And you know, when you think about some silver linings that have happened, this is one example, right? Before, we would have a board meeting, we would be in here. And if you were able to come and join us, you could join us. Well, now, we have actually, thanks to the board for having that vision. And thank you so much to Amy Carrera, who's put so much work into and our team to get this room set up and for us to also be able to have people at home in the comfort of their home actually join us. So just a lot we have learned.
You know, I will say that maybe others were also, there was a webinar by Capitol Advisors in Sacramento a week or so ago, maybe others were on that as well. And they were talking, they had representatives from districts, a number of them around the state. And they were talking about the things they were doing in reaction to the pandemic and recovering from it. And the thing that amazed me about it was that we had already done everything that they were planning to do. I mean, I, you know, we sit here and we think we're doing pretty good. We think we are. But then when you hear what, where other districts are, I feel really good about where we are now. And I think that this district could have done most of those talks and done them very successfully. So it's a terrific effort. I think we do have one person from outside who wanted to make a comment on this agenda item. So we could bring her in now, please.
Hello.
Welcome to our meeting.
Hi, this is Neda. I wanted to thank everybody for all of the hard work, all of the board members and all of our districts from the top to the bottom. Everybody's been so wonderful. It's been such a stressful year for everyone. And it's really been handled with a lot of grace and really recognition for different, you know, families' risk tolerance and taking care of all of our families and staff and teachers and everything. So I really appreciate that. I, I love the testing that we have available, the COVID testing. And I've heard from a lot of parents and a lot of us are wondering if that's going to be available through the summer or at least while summer school is in session. A lot of, there's a lot of interest in continuing having that testing available for students and their families. And also, I was so happy to hear, one of the things I wanted to mention was if we'll be able to have some vaccination sites through CBUSD. And I'm happy to hear that you guys are already working on that. We'll love to hear about some vaccination clinics throughout the district to help families and students to get vaccinated as quickly as possible, since it's so difficult to get appointments sometimes. And also, the last comment that I had is about accessibility of meetings regarding this COVID stuff. I really have appreciated this. There's no way I could have made it to any of the meetings if they weren't virtual. Even right now, you know, I listened to the Proctor meeting while I was at my son's baseball game. And now I'm making dinner at home and able to participate and be a part of the meeting. And I really appreciate the accessibility. And I'm hoping that we'll still be able to have some level of this accessibility in the future, including being able to fill out these forms and speak if there's something to say. So thank you so much for everybody's hard work. And hopefully, we'll be able to keep that testing going. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I want to say, and I looked at Ms. Chan over there to confirm that we will have testing over the summer and it has been very effective. In fact, I went over there the other week. So that's, yes, we will. And in vaccination, we, I really hope to get some more information and flyers from the county office of education and the county health department to put out just about everywhere. And then while we're working to see what we can bring to our district around to be closer here. So thank you.
Michael? I apologize, just a follow-up question. Do you have a sense from Dr. Moss and from the county office of education? Will they be giving us guidance on how to reopen in the fall? Are we kind of like in a different phase now? We're in a different phase. I understand that. But will it be as prescriptive with reopening plans? How's that look? What serve the higher authorities? How are they guiding us going into the new year?
Yeah, so there, there isn't, it's not like last year where we had to have a safety plan approved and all of that because we already have so many things in place. They'll probably just tell us, give us, in fact, I have like fifteen questions, I'm sending them already about just the logistics of things. And once that's figured out, we just have to do our work and whatever plans. If there is guidance, then it will be for all the school districts and we would just follow those. I know that they're working on that right now. So, but there's just, you know, you, there's, there's so much to think about. For example, lunchtime, you know, pickup, drop-off. Just all sorts of things that we're getting clarification on. But what I'm excited about is I keep hearing that much of what, much of the restrictions that we've had so far would go away. And it will be a lot easier for us and for students and families. So we'll keep you updated.
Are there any other comments or questions on the reopening?
One question.
Future opening. Oh, Shane, hey.
Hi, just for Parveen, thank you again for your update. I just had a question about the Virtual Academy. Obviously, it's continuing into next year. Has there been any talk of like bringing, making that a reality in like a post-COVID world? Or is this only a COVID program that we're having?
Great question. Actually, Shane, that is a program we've had for a few years. We just haven't really taken advantage of it as much as, you know, these COVID just kind of threw us in there. Kind of like how we're using technology so much more. So it will stay, it's a program we have, it has a CDC code, the California Department Code. It is an actual school and that's why next year and moving forward, if there are families who would like to have online school or virtual school, that would be where they would be at and for next year, as we're looking at it, you know, if families want to be there and then the year after they want to go back to their homeschool, that is also something that's possible, so. Good question, and I think it's important for our high school students, we've actually had high school students in it in the previous years. But this next year, we have a lot more students who are taking advantage of it full-time or part-time because you can do that in high school, not in middle and elementary school because the the high school format is unit-based. So, good question Shane, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Terrific, thank you Parveen. We'll move on to item B, which as we all know, June is Pride Month and we have a resolution supporting Pride Month.
Yes, yes, we do, and I'm just excited to share this. I know we've shared this with other districts as well, so it's a resolution for your approval. And in the resolution, it lists that we will have the flags raised at every one of our sites. I know that.
Anyone have any quick comments? I know we have, I think, three or so, four folks who'd like to speak. Anyone? Go ahead Lavender.
I just want to say, you know, oh, some of my closest friends and family fall into this category and this is a very diverse category. I don't want to just think it's just one group. I mean, my child is gender non-conforming and bisexual, my brother is gay, my best friend is gay, and when we've been in the pandemic, these kids that we support may not be in safe environments. And this resolution not only puts forth our commitment to all means all and helping others feel that they are accepted, but really stating, you know, we support you and we're here for you and I just, I just wanted to say that.
Anyone else, oh Dolly, go ahead.
So while I was a teacher here in Castro Valley over at Redwood High, there were a number of LGBTQ students who I supported. And some of their issues were that they didn't feel society had supported them. And that's why this resolution is so important and raising the flag is so important. I continue to have students who are, who identify as LGBTQ and also need the support of their community. And I commend the board for putting this before us.
So a couple of years ago, when we had the first flag raising at Castro Valley High, I had the opportunity to talk to one of the teachers about her experience and how when she was first hired twenty-something years ago and she wore a pride shirt to school, she was told you can't do that. And now she works on campus with her wife. So the evolution of our community and our school districts supporting students and teachers and community members in feeling welcome is so important. So I'm glad we're doing this again.
My comments will probably echo a lot what Dot just said. The LGBTQQ community in Castro Valley, I think in many ways has led our community, brought it forward in a place where oftentimes you're not welcome if you're not from here, right? And I just commend everyone, all the activists that that really have shifted this community in a in a great way, just by asserting that they are who they are. And I really commend the the work of this district in inclusion and the previous boards for 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 making this happen.
Yeah, I think this is another example of all means all, and we're trying to put that into practice here. And this resolution reflects that attitude, I think, that the district has, I mean, we've supported the pride celebration. I don't know whether it's going to happen this year or not, unfortunately, again. I guess we can ask Billy in a minute about that and Austin. But every year it's been in existence, and I think that's another good statement by the district, so. Can we move on and maybe hear from our speakers? Who's first?
I have Austin Bruckner first.
Austin, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, President Howard, trustee Shane and Superintendent Amati. My name's Austin Bruckner and I am quickly approaching what will be my tenth high school reunion. I'm a proud Castro Valley High School graduate. I currently live in Hayward. I'm here today, first of all, to to thank the board for their work in years past. I'm here on behalf of Castro Valley Pride and I've had the honor of working for about eleven years with a group of of really dedicated and awesome folks that are part of our CB Pride team. I came on just after our first pride event and it's been quite the privilege to watch the board grow, watch our our event grow and watch the the district's commitment to LGBT students truly expand. This year, Castro Valley Pride partnered with our friends at Oakland and Livermore Pride to reach out to every school district in the county with what I hope is a simple ask. They adopt a similar resolution to the one you're considering this evening. Much like your board prior to to the new members and the new blood that's come on the board over the last couple of years, many districts want to just pass a resolution and tuck it away. They don't want to put those words on paper. They don't want to go beyond that and they surely don't want to show their pride in what's a really public and rightfully scary manner for you as elected officials. But it's critically important for LGBTQ students, families, parents, teachers and staff. It's an important public display to raise that pride flag. Last night, the Alameda County Office of Education passed a resolution, but again stumbled short with displaying the pride flag citing the lack of a policy. As you know, I I sent to your board emails the US Flag Code, which does allow for this. Tonight, in a couple of minutes, the Hayward Unified School District is considering a resolution very similar to the one that's before you. Tonight, your board, I hope undoubtedly will pass a resolution and it's a safe bet that you'll also raise the rainbow flags again every year or at every school, this will be the second year that you've done so. These are important steps, but I'm also confident your board will once again ignore these two requests that I make each and every year, that you reexamine the days diversity program to ensure that students have the opportunity to learn about our community's rich diversity rather than take a long off-campus lunch to avoid attending an optional session. All students should have the chance to celebrate our diversity in a classroom. They shouldn't have to choose between getting lunch with their friends or learning because let's be honest, they're going to pick lunch every time. Ten years ago, the days diversity program was a rich and meaningful program and sadly, it's a watered-down version. I've also asked that you address student athletes, pull the data about the number of times a self-identified LGBT student says they're bullied by a student athlete. How much longer are we going to tolerate our football players and other athletes scoring cheap shots at the expense of gay students? Develop a program that actually holds student athletes accountable. I see that we are quickly running out of time and I respectfully ask that you take this resolution, adopt it.
Thank you, Austin.
We have Jazzy.
I'm sorry.
Jazzy is next.
Hi. I also submitted a comment with my, a written comment with my form, but I just wanted to say that I attended Castro Valley Schools for Elementary and Middle School over a decade ago now and fully support Pride Month of June and flying pride flags. I'd fly them year-round. And yeah, that's it, I just wanted to voice my support.
Thank you for the comments.
Next, we have Billy Bradford.
Welcome Billy. If you're there. Hello Billy. Put down the bicycle.
How about that, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we got you now.
And maybe now you can see me or not. I also submitted my comments to written, but I'll I'll jump in and just say thank you so much to the board District Superintendent Amati for your support in past years and now, and I'm sure going forward, I'm sure this resolution will pass. And and I so appreciate the Castro Valley Unified School District for what they have done for the LGBTQ community. As Mr. Kuziak said, I think we have a a strong and vibrant community here in Castro Valley and it's it's a partnership between people who are members of the LGBTQ community and work for full equality and those of you who support us, we can't do it alone, we're all in this together. So that's it for me, thank you so much. One more thing, Austin Bruckner is doing amazing work pushing for resolutions, not only in Castro Valley, but in Hayward, Union City, Livermore, Oakland, all over the place, Pleasanton. And without him, we wouldn't have stuff like this happening. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you Billy. Are there any others? One more, okay.
We have Mr. O.
Hello, thank you so much. My name's Travis Olusavu and I'm a teacher in Castro Valley and I'm also a Castro Valley alumni. And I also just wanted to thank the board for their for their work on this and these resolutions. Personally speaking, as someone who attended schools in Castro Valley, the the distance Castro Valley has come for inclusion and specifically on LGBT plus issues is incredible and to be able to see those changes over all this time as a staff member and as a former student has really been touching and has been appreciated. Castro Valley is certainly not the community that it was when I was a student ten years ago. And I am so appreciative for all the work. I know that much of that is a result of the work that our school board does in the community to impact families and students. And I just want to say, you know, today I had the privilege of, you know, delivering an advisory lesson to my students in advance of Pride Month and talking through some of these issues. And that's just not a conversation that was had in Castro Valley before. Being a student during the Prop Eight era and being an LGBT plus student was very challenging and to see the way that we address it and support students now has really come a long way and we've still got work to do, but I just wanted to express my gratitude for the work of the school board and community member activists as well as the students in our schools who have been so willing to engage in these conversations and the support that families are offering at home. So thank you all so much for that, I do really appreciate it and that's all.
Thank you for your comments.
There's one.
One more, okay.
Bill Turley.
Yes, hi, I just wanted to to say as an actual gay person and a parent of a student in in Independent Elementary that I wanted to add my support for the Declaration. I do want to echo the sentiment though that the Declaration really isn't enough by itself that as other efforts around equity and inclusion, we need real actions to support this Declaration and to educate students about the diversity in our community and to fully support students that are really outside the mainstream, whether it's LGBTQ or anything else. And as much as I applaud the support of others and their statements about others in the community, it it really says a lot more to me when I'm hearing from people who are in the community speaking out about what the district is doing for students and the community in general for equity and and seeing those actions and the effects that they have on them. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We, it's the last one, okay. Any other, Lavender, go ahead.
I wanted to make a motion. I want to.
Just wanted to ask if there are any more comments or questions before we go to that. Remember you.
Is it okay if we have a brief discussion? Okay, thanks.
First you make a motion and then.
So there are no more comments? At this point?
So trustee Whitaker just made a motion, you could second it and then you could have discussions.
Okay, then we'll take a motion Lavender.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution eighty-six twenty-two-one declaring June twenty-twenty-one to be lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ plus Pride Month.
For a second.
I I'm happy to second it, yes.
It's removed and seconded, I'll ask again, is there any further discussion on the issue?
Yes, and thank you for helping the newbie through this. I, it really resonates hearing about bullying. If you have faced it, it really plays with your mind. And I would just hope that maybe as part of this, we can talk about bullying in our schools a bit more and maybe me as a new board member just learn about some of the programs. So I'm just, I'm eager to learn more about anti-bullying in our, particularly in our high school. And also, I would love to learn more about days of diversity and how we as a board can support that effort. That's what I'd like to have.
Yeah, we'll set up, yeah, I was going to say we'll set up some time for you to meet with our team so you can learn more about what we're doing in in the school, yeah.
I just want to mention, you know, you know, when we talk about bullying and singling people out and making them, othering them, the work that the district has done with social and emotional supports and positive interventions, you know, you can see the positive responses and I'm hoping that we can continue down this path to support our students and meet that need and provide those interventions.
A hearing, no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote here, Shane, your vote?
Absolutely, yes.
I think you said yes, sorry. It's Lavender?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will say, yes, it's an easy vote, so the resolution is approved, five to zero. Thanks to everybody for that. Okay, we'll move on to item C, the Tri-Valley Teacher Induction Project Annual Report, TV Tip. Dr. Beads.
Okay, good evening. Tonight, we're very fortunate to have Megan Setcliffe. Megan is our coordinator of our TV Tip Tri-Valley Teacher Induction Program. This is a program that we are extremely proud of. It has always been our goal with the board's work to provide our new teachers with one-to-one coaching and mentoring for the first two years that they're here in Castro Valley. So as I said, it is, I believe it is an asset to our district and our teachers. And Megan, our coordinator, is going to present this report and introduce our wonderful coaches.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Board President Howard, members of the board, Superintendent Amati and Cabinet. I am Megan Suckler and I am the Tri-Valley Teacher Induction Coordinator for Castro Valley. With me tonight virtually, Lauren Cotcher, Pat Eppard and Joanna Hogan. And also joining me virtually is Leslie Williams, our TV Tip Director from Livermore Valley Joint Unified. Next slide, please. I'm so happy to be here this evening to tell you a little about TV Tip, share the accreditation process we are currently engaged in and conclude by recognizing this year's induction graduates. Next slide, please. TV Tip began in two thousand and three and Castro Valley joined in two thousand and six, thanks to Dr. Beads. We support eligible teachers for two years as they transition from their university teacher credential programs to their own classrooms. TV Tip is a pathway for teachers to obtain their clear credential in general or special education. Our program is constantly evolving to meet the needs of new teachers. For example, in two thousand and nineteen, thanks to some careful planning by Susie Williams and Dr. Beads, the Special Services Department established a the Special Services Department established a coaching position modeled after TV Tip. Because most years, almost a quarter of our new teachers are special education teachers, we seized the opportunity to partner with special education coach Joanna Hogan and enhance our support for those teachers. In addition to the expertise and assistance Joanna has provided for us this year, she has also served as a TV Tip coach for several of our new teachers. We are so glad these teachers have been able to benefit from the synergistic relationship. I know Pat and Lauren would agree with me when I say that both Joanna and the partnership with special services have become an invaluable part of our program. Several of our strengths of our program include providing just-in-time supports, which means our full release coaches can be in classrooms during the school day as teachers are teaching their students. This just-in-time support is balanced with a focused vision on effective, high-leverage practices we know make a difference for students, such as developing student-teacher relationships and refining teaching strategies. Because we know the teacher is the number one school-related indicator of student success, and therefore, the quality of the coaching we provide our teachers is critical. Our coaches engage in continuous, high-quality professional development throughout the year. Next slide, please. As a program, we aim to meet the goals displayed, the first being increased teacher efficacy and retention. In looking at the last five years of completer data, Castro Valley has an average retention rate of eighty-six percent of new teachers. To reach these goals, providing high-quality professional learning, developing reflective practitioners and retaining them, TV Tip TV Tip is all about the coaching, nonevalutive in nature, with a focus on the individual growth and development of each teacher in order to meet the needs and enhance the learning for our Castro Valley students. This year in Castro Valley, we have four coaches serving thirty teacher candidates, which in turn affects over five thousands of our students. Next slide, please. On our most current survey of our teachers, a hundred percent of them stated that they strongly agree that our coaching, observation, and feedback had a positive impact on their teaching, which in turn had a positive impact on student learning. With the year we have endured, we are pleased to see that ninety-nine percent of our teachers shared that their coach had a significant impact on managing job-related stress, as well as ninety-eight percent stating their coach provided much-needed emotional support as we all navigated our way through this unprecedented year. Survey data is shared in the consortium on an ongoing basis and used for continuous program improvement. Next slide, please. Although we've had a longstanding, successful partnership with Pleasanton Unified, in two thousand and nineteen, a task force was created to explore induction structures. After careful consideration in February twenty twenty, the task force decided that Livermore would pursue its own accreditation and would serve as the lead agency for the Tri Valley Consortium, made up of Livermore, Castro Valley, and Dublin Unified School Districts. On August eighteenth, twenty twenty, Livermore Livermore's Board of Education passed a resolution to enter into agreement with the Commission of Teacher Crediting, the CTC, to begin the process of creating our own accredited teacher induction program. The accreditation process can take up to two years. During this transition, TV Tip has been operating under San Ramon Unified School District's induction program. The leadership team consisting of myself as Castro Valley's coordinator, the coordinator of Dublin Unified, Casey Nissen, and our Livermore Program Director, Leslie Williams, starting this past summer that we've been working through each stage under the guidance of the TV Tip Advisory Committee. To date, we have submitted more than forty pages of narrative along with two hundred and twenty-five pieces of supporting evidence for the first three stages of this process. Just last week, we were notified by the CTC that all of our submissions for stage three are in alignment. We will be appearing before the commission on June seventeenth, twenty twenty one for official institutional approval. This means the CTC would officially approve Livermore as our TV Tip program sponsor. Moving forward, we will be working on stage four induction program standards. In this stage, we will be writing to the state for the approval of our specific induction program and its structure. Our goal is to complete stage four and appear before the CTC on August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Once stage four has been approved, Livermore and the Tri Valley Teacher Induction Program will have initial provisional program approval to offer our induction program. The induction program will run under provisional status for two to four years before full program approval is granted in stage five. Next slide, please. So to pivot a little bit, I know pivot's been a very used word this year. We're gonna go to more celebratory tone. Finally, this evening, we're gonna be congratulating our Castro Valley Year Two teachers for completing the induction program. In the wake of this pandemic, our induction participants continued to work diligently with a coach, reflecting and refining practice with the goal of improving learning outcomes for all students, all while teaching in both virtual and hybrid settings. For those TV teachers who might be watching tonight, thank you for your dedication and commitment to our Castro Valley students. Next slide, please. And one more, please. Thank you. Please join us in celebrating the following Year Two participating teachers who will soon be awarded a clear California Teaching Credential. Leila Emiri from Chabot. Will Bixel from Vanoy. Brittany Brown from Castro Valley High. Alyssa Campbell from Marshall Elementary. Alex Carr from Proctor. Sarah Pinzon from Marshall. Jeff Foster from Castro Valley High. John Gueva from Canyon. Taylor Lynn from Chabot. Emmanuel Martinez from Creekside. Tess McConnell from Vanoy. Rebecca Moore from Castro Valley High. Jess Nowak from Stanton. Travis Olazabal from Canyon. Julie Beth Runcle from Stanton. Jody Silva from Jensen Ranch. Nick Zayou, I'm sorry, I've been practicing this all day because I want to get it correct because I know people mess up my name. I want to get this correct. Nick. Zerabe Nebkoff from Castro Valley High, and we had to do a huge shout out to Jeff Small at Castro Valley High School. Obviously, he was nominated for Teacher of the Year, so Jeff Small, congratulations. We would like to thank the board for your continued support of our induction program and the work we do to support new teachers and their students. Thank you very much.
Or before we end, I want to say a couple of things about this presentation. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Beats because um she really was the person who, as Megan said, really was so instrumental in making this happen. And we are so lucky to have Megan and the team that you um have met um in uh leading TV Tip. TV Tip has a very special place in my heart, big time, because it is the the kind of work I did when I first went to the district office in Fremont. And I know that when Megan says they turned in two hundred pages, she's absolutely right. It is the most rigorous process to get an approval for anything. And that's why you see it takes years and years. And then when you see Megan and our TV Tip coaches um newsletter that they put out, you just can't help but read through the entire thing and click on every little link that they have. So I really want to thank um our TV Tip, and I also um want to um share my gratitude with the superintendent in Livermore and their team um and their TV tip or the induction coaches and team for making this happen because we had some difficult uh discussions uh as we were moving in this direction, and I really appreciate their support and their leadership. So I don't know if Dr. Beat wants to say anything else before we finish the presentation.
I don't think I've sound. Uh again, this is an amazing program that that has done so much for our teachers and had such an impact. Um does anybody have any questions before we move on to the next item or? Okay, again, thank you to Megan. Um all of our coaches, they have done, we are very fortunate. They've done an amazing job. So thank you and congratulations to our graduates.
Yeah, thanks for the report, and also it's amazing to see that this program is uh doing so well because it sort of did have to rebuild this program just a couple of years ago. So Mike, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I just um whether it's like Michelle Pfeiffer or Arnold Schwarzenegger, like the Hollywood depiction of teachers are someone who shouldn't, you think shouldn't be a teacher gets thrown into the classroom and there's no intentionality behind it or something. It has been so gratifying in the last few months, being a board member, learning what this is as a profession to be a teacher. Um and it's just uh as a parent in this district to know that every teacher eh that's coming into our district is getting a quality uh program to to make them a fantastic teacher. So um I I really appreciate that, and I just want to thank everyone on the staff for teaching me about this. And so thank you.
And if you think about what our new teachers have gone through those last two years, could you imagine doing it without the support? I I just couldn't, so.
It's interesting. I um was talking to a brand-new teacher or a first-year teacher, and I said, we did this just to to make sure your first year was exciting, but just imagine being a first-year teacher in the in the kind of conditions we've had. So it's just amazing. They've done a beautiful job and so proud of the the work they're doing in the classroom.
You know, in one of the slides, um she showed that ninety-nine percent of the teachers felt they received some emotional support from their coaches, and I'm wondering who's supporting these coaches? I mean, that's that's a lot of burden. I mean, I'm I'm sure they take it on with grace and because they want to, but there's some need there also.
They are pros.
Yeah.
They are unbelievable that that I know for a fact that they give hours and hours. All hours of the day and night, they're accessible. Um there, our coaches are amazing.
The things they're doing aren't just, honestly, it's for every teacher. So as they share with the entire district, their workshops and and the things, the newsletter that they put together, every one of us can benefit from. So that was a really good point, um trustee Theodore. I mean, to to think about what the weight of all of this on our coaches as well.
Dolly?
I just wanted to quickly mention that that eighty-six percent uh retention rate is really high uh for new teachers and, you know, Castro Valley's done a great job with the TV Tip uh keeping that that higher percentage.
Okay, well, thanks again for a great report. We'll move on to item D, which is the Personnel Report. We have a special person on that report. Dr. Beast, would you like to take that as well?
We do. Um so tonight you have two administrators that uh we are recommending for hire. Uh you have already approved a Dr. Raul Zamora when you approved his contract after closed session. But the other individual that's on this personnel report is uh the recommendation for the principal of Chabot Elementary. And so we are very pleased to say that after our rigorous recruitment and selection process that we are bringing forward one of our own, Dr. Dalmas Hosani, to be the principal for Chabot Elementary. So um excited to have her join our team.
It's great. Good news for that. Uh so this is an action item.
I'll move approval of the personal report.
Thank you, Dot. Is there a second? Thank you, Dolly. Is there any other discussion on this item? Dot?
So on the personal report is also Sherry's retirement. Um which is eh you're leaving a huge hole in this district and um when I came on to the board six years ago, I probably came in more antagonistically than our current board members because I felt that there was more to fight for. And you always treated me with such grace and kindness despite the fact that sometimes I said things that were crazy off the wall um and maybe weren't always kind. Um so I want to appreciate the the relationship that you've helped grow between us and all that you've done for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dot. Lavender?
I I also want to say something to Dr. Beats. Um I got to know Dr. Beats prior to being on the board when she helped um my family during our time of need when my late husband Nicholas Dub Whitaker passed away from cancer. Um the kindness that she showed and the extra steps that she took to take care of a teacher's family has always resonated and sat with me, and I I will forever be grateful, and I know that I am just one of many families that has been there when there has been a need. So you go on to your next adventure, Dr. Beats, and just know that you will be sorely missed, and you have created a safe space for so many of us that have needed your help in our time of need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marveen?
It's 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 just really hard to just to even think about the fact that Dr. Beats is retiring. This is my sixth year here, and I feel.
Have to approve it.
I know. I feel so fortunate. I tried. She didn't listen. She didn't listen. I know that uh Jason and Suzie and Sherry and I are really very close, working together day in and day out, and she has just been amazing. I uh feel like she's the cornerstone of so many things that have happened here. And I I can just go on and on and on about how amazing she is. It's going to be um we're we're gonna have a big hole um, you know, to fill and big shoes to fill, and she's done an amazing job, and we're gonna miss her. But we still have her for a little while, so.
And that's why I wanted to ask. We have you for a few more meetings, right? Why are you saying goodbye now?
Were you to be exact, not that I'm counting?
We have you for six weeks, and we expect a lot of work out of you.
Yeah, and we know where she lives, so.
Don't worry, you'll get it.
Okay, so uh we have a motion and a second and a lot of discussion. Uh I'll call for a vote on this. Lavender?
Yes.
Dot, Dolly, excuse me?
Yes.
Dot?
I guess, yeah.
It's a tough one. There's still three of us left that could vote it down. Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes reluctantly. Uh but thanks to everyone, the personnel report is approved. We are glad to get a new principal. So our next item is the approval of the contract.
Yeah.
For our new assistant superintendent of HR, the new Sherry. So this is another action item, please.
I'll move approval of the contract.
Thank you, Dot.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any further discussion?
Does he know how big the shoes are that he has to fall?
Well, hopefully they were, they filled him in on that.
They know each other.
Lavender?
I just wanted to welcome him to our district and, you know, we're a big happy family, and we're we're happy to welcome you to our district, and we're looking forward to working with you and and welcome.
Anything else?
Um I'm excited to welcome him as well. And I know they'll have some time to transition. Um and it's great that Dr. Beats and and Dr. Zamora have already worked eh in that in those positions before together, so welcome.
Okay, I'll call the vote. Lavender?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I'll say yes, so uh we've approved the contract of uh Raul Zamora as assistant soup for HR. Congratulations to him. Uh we do have now a public hearing about the collective bargaining agreement that we have reached with Castro Valley Teachers Association, so I'll open the public meeting. That's better. Do we have any requests to speak? Hearing none, we'll close the public meeting and move on to item G, which is our potential vote to ratify the agreement. This is an action item.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the Castro Valley Unified School District and the Castro Valley Teachers Association.
Thank you, Lavender. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Michael. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the voting. Uh is this considered a personnel action with for the student member or not? Is this considered a personnel action with, for the student member or not?
Yeah, Shane doesn't.
Okay, sorry, Shane. So Lavender?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Dot?
Yes.
Twice a mistake. Sorry. Michael?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. And that passes five to zero. We're really happy about that. So thanks to everybody involved in that brief negotiation, I'm glad to say. So we have no more public comments, so we're down to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll be very short. There's a lot happening in our school district. Lots of events. They're on your calendars. I did want to just mention retirement reception is on May 20th at 4 o'clock, and you'll get some more information on that. Also, this Saturday, we start the showing of Chinatown Rising. We already have about 176 people signed up and we have room for 200. So please share. It's a great event. And on Sunday, Trustee Theodore and the creator of the film are going to, we're actually going to show some of the clips and then there will be a question and answer conversation, so at 1 o'clock. That's it. Thank you.
So Shane, do you have anything else to add?
Not much, just that I've been still working with CSBMA to get a vote on the California Board of Education, as well as recruiting new student board members to join the organization.
Thank you, Shane. Lavender?
I did have a question for Dot and Parveen. Is that session going to be recorded so people who can't make it can see it afterwards?
I think so, yes.
Okay, good, because I can't make it and I want to see it.
Yeah, and you have 48 hours to watch the film if you
So I want to watch the film, but I won't be able to see the panel, so I want to make sure that I can see it.
We're recording.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Updates for me, Gary and Parveen and I run the HARD Subcommittee and did some work there. I, this weekend is the Canyon and Creekside African-American Awards. I'm going to stop in for a little bit, but I can't attend the whole time. Next week, Dot, Parveen and I are going to be at the Board Policy Subcommittee on the 17th and 19th. Some really interesting board policies coming through. I'm looking forward to seeing them. I did want to ask, the, there is a meeting on Wednesday that, the name of the board member isn't listed. Just wanted to see who that was supposed to be for the, let's see, it's next week. The Special Education Parent Advisory Meeting. Am I missing? Want to make sure that's not me. If it is, I just don't see a name on it. Okay, great. If we could add a name, that way we know. Senior Awards Night is next Wednesday as well. I'll be stopping in for that. There's an award from the family. And then I'm really looking toward, forward to the mariachi virtual performance on May 21st. It'll be exciting to see what our kids have been up to. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Lavender.
So I was able to visit Castro Valley High School and Blaine Torpey was very gracious to take me around to several spots. I had really wanted to visit the Wellness Center and like one of the CTE or Career Technical Education Programs. And so I was able to see that, talk to a few people. And then he also showed me a bit of the improvements that I believe were in the 100 wing. So that was great to see. I would, and there were some students around. I just can't wait till next year when we really see the whole place buzzing again. I went to the Castro Valley MAC meeting Monday, just about what's happening in the community there. And then I'm signed, I'm one of the 175 people signed up to see Chinatown Rising and to also go to the 1 o'clock meeting where we'll have a little discussion on that and looking forward to that. And, oh, and yesterday was the Wellness Council meeting that both Trustee Theodore and I attended.
Thank you, Dolly.
Okay, so last week was the ROP Board Meeting and it was an amazingly fast meeting. And then we did spend some time in closed session talking about the superintendent's goals or her review. Let's see. The Wellness Committee meeting yesterday was really good. We broke, we went into breakout rooms and eat breakout rooms based on sort of the three topics of interest and looked at the data from the CHICS, the California Healthy Kids Survey, and also looked at the wellness plan to see where there might maybe initiatives for next year. One of the problems that the group I was in got stuck on was the data from last year was gathered before the pandemic. So, and we know that there's going to be a lot of need that may not show up in that data. So we spent some time talking about that and then coming up with some potential initiatives. But that was, it's hard right now to make those, you know, decisions about wellness for our students when we don't have the data to help guide those things. I also attended the Canyon Counselor Meeting last week or the week before. And that was also a quick meeting, but it was great to hear what the counselors have been doing in reaching students. You know, in a normal situation, they would be able to pull students out of their classrooms and see them face-to-face. And so it's more challenging to do it virtually. But at the same time, they're able to serve in a different way and maybe get feedback from parents or interact with parents better because parents don't have to come to campus to meet with a counselor. They could do these things virtually. So that was good to hear. You know, we keep saying pivot, we keep saying pivot, and I hate that word, but they have pivoted and they're serving students in the best way that they can. And that's it.
Thanks. Mike? Whenever we say pivot, I think of Ross from Friends with the couch going down the stairs every time. But two updates. The Educational Foundation had their Bike for Education event. Want to thank everyone who participated in that and just make my regular shout out to everyone. We need you to be involved with your educational foundation. We need philanthropic engagement in this community. And the Ed Foundation is a very fantastic place to do that. So please consider being a part of that. And then I wanted to thank President Howard. We went to the Revenue Enhancement Committee, really brought an important message there about kind of focusing the efforts there and creating some goals around it. But what really struck me is just that we have such a commitment from volunteers in this community to step up in support of our schools. And I just want to thank them. And if people are interested in being involved with that effort, wouldn't it be great if they were to raise their hand and join that? So it's great to, through those two efforts, the Educational Foundation and the Revenue Enhancement Committee to really see the depth of our volunteers in this community. So that's it.
Well, I have just a few things. I mentioned before I was at the Capitol Advisors Meeting and with Lavender at the HARD Preparation Meeting and with Michael at the Revenue Enhancement. And I will say, Michael, I agree with you that the, I was really impressed by the quality of the people who were in that meeting. I mean, it was really fabulous, so I think that's going to do very well. So I have two other small things. The Rotary Club last week, in cooperation with the Castro Valley Educational Foundation, had a presentation by Eric Alatori, who had sang for 28 years with Chanticleer, the great a cappella group from San Francisco. And he was in conversation with Larissa Sadoway. And it is probably the best talk that I have seen in years from anybody. The discussion between them was fabulous. The video is on the Rotary website and I would encourage everybody to watch it. It was more than about singing and music. It was about life and learning and just, it was incredible. Easily the best talk I've seen in years. Best discussion. So I highly recommend that. The last thing I have is, I got a letter here today from the Superior Court of Alameda County. It's not bad news. Nobody's named in it, fortunately. At any rate, they are seeking nominations for the Alameda County Civil Grand Jury for next year. And the Grand Jury is really an interesting organization. They work for a year and they select their own areas that they want to investigate. They look at all sorts of areas, the jails, the schools, the, all kinds of things. Any public entity is subject to their examination and then their recommendations later on. The legal advisor to the Civil Grand Jury here is Assistant District Attorney Rob Warren, who is a resident of Castro Valley. And several of us certainly know Rob pretty well, and he's a great guy. And I think this is a great opportunity. They're asking us if we know people, we'd like to nominate people that they can consider. By the way, elected officials are banned from the Civil Grand Jury, so we cannot nominate ourselves. But if you know someone and you would like to nominate them, let me know. This is true. It's the presiding judge is requesting the input and I can give you the address, contact if you are interested. It's a good opportunity for somebody, just not us right now. Anyway, thanks to everybody for a great meeting. Congratulations to Proctor, to TV TIP, to our teachers who were nominated and to our candidate who's going on to the county contest. And thanks, everybody here. Thanks especially to Amy for putting all this together. The system is beautiful. We'll get even better and better at it. So thanks to all the people who stayed with us and watched the meeting and we will see you all soon. Thanks and good night.